Item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. If you have any, would you please identify yourself and state your name and address? Mr. Kleimer?
Paul Kleimer, resident of West Rock Hill Township.
Okay.
Can I stand from here and give my comments on? And the issue is the resolution-
That's what I want you to identify the issue.
Okay. The issue is the resolution that was passed unanimously by the Board of Supervisors that would prohibit a mini casino from coming into West Rock Hill Township, which you can do under the recent casino bill that was passed by the General Assembly.
Okay.
So I'd like to make comments on that. Do you want me to come?
Would you care to come up here, please? Thanks, Paul. You can either stand right there or you can stand right by that microphone there.
Okay. Well, this was a very courageous act by the supervisors of West Rock Hill Township. So I want to commend the bipartisan support, Jim, and Jay and Don, for doing this. And you know why you're doing it, but I'll explain to the audience perhaps that-
That's where you should explain.
...and clarify. Recently, there was a massive gaming bill passed in the General Assembly and signed into law by the government. And it creates ten category four casinos. These are mini casinos that have from 300 slot machines to 750 and 15 table rooms. Now, just think about that. And there's 10 of them. There are 10 category one, category two casinos. These are major casinos. Four have racetracks, six do not, but they're all major casinos. They're going to get, the essence is, they're going to get each one of these 10 casinos for $7,500,000, which is a ripoff to the tax pay. But that's not the reason for this resolution. They're worth $25 to $30 million, but the bill was passed to correct the debt, the 1.8 billion debt that the state had. So this is corporate welfare. However, here's the point that's so important, that in the bill, it says that these mini casinos or category four casinos have to be 15 miles, 25 linear miles from the next casino. So we have Sam's up in Bethlehem and we have Parks down in Vansalem. So this has to be 25 miles distance to put in another casino. However, the townships have until December 31st, 2017, to opt out to say, "We don't want a casino in our community." And that's what this resolution is about. It puts it on record to the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board that West Rock Hill in Bucks County does not want a casino, a mini casino, a category four casino. Now, you say to me, "Well, Paul, the law says that they can't put one within 25 miles. Aren't you being a little, isn't everyone overreacting?" No, because you can't trust the people that wrote this bill, the lobbyists that came in. These are casino people, they're after money. I just told you how they're going to get, if they get $7.5 million, that's what they're going to pay for it. They're worth 20 to 25 million, maybe even 30 million dollars. I don't have the time to prove it to you why I give you that figure, but trust me, it is. I'll tell you why this is a decision that I highly commend this board for doing. Remember I told you that it's a 25 mile distance from the next casino? And they're not to play politics? Well, in the bill, before it even gets dry, if you saw the Philadelphia Inquirer this past Sunday, it said Harris Furb's mystery gift to one casino. Already in the bill, they're making it possible for the casino at Mount Airy and the Poconos to make sure that no other casino gets near them. So they made it more difficult for a mini casino to even get near where they are. They have to be even further back than the 25 miles. Let me put it in black and white. That means that they're protected from a category casino from going in there, which will save them millions and millions of dollars. However, the politics are being played out and the ink isn't even dry on the bill. So, that's why you cannot trust the people who wrote these bills. You don't know what's going to happen. I don't know how they could change the law so that West Rock Hill, East Rock Hill, Richland Township could be subject to one of these casinos. And once they come in, you know, then it's too late. You can yell and shout and do anything you want, but they have the power, they have the ability to move forward. That's why I commend this bipartisan support. And I hope you can support them on this resolution, because I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, it is the right thing to do. Thank you for your courage and thank you for your ability to step up to the plate and not to be shamed or afraid to do what is right for the people, not of West Rock Hill Township, but for Bucks County. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to announcements. I will be announcing where we'll be holding an executive session tonight after the meeting.
Yes, for real estate.
For a real estate matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment I'd like to make during-
Okay.
So-
Announcements.
It is something I have to say.
Okay.
And I'm going to move down here.
That's fine.
The following statement is my opinion and not the opinion of the board. At the October 18th meeting of the Board of Supervisors, during public comment, a resident discussed her issues with the township related to trash removal, an incident that lasted for 19 days and is fully documented here at the township. In my opinion, a resident has the right to stand up during public comment and say what they want without opposition from the board. I'm willing to hear them out and I'm willing to allow them to say what they want about me. However, when my family is personally attacked, I will not sit back and take it. I don't believe anyone should have the right to attack the family of anyone sitting in the front of this room, and I find it appalling that it was allowed to go on. In the future, I will make every effort to stop this sort of behavior and if necessary, I will make every effort to have them removed from the building. Family members should be off limits. Additionally, at the end of the meeting, Mrs. Furlong announced where videos will be posted by her and Mr. Linden. I have viewed the videos in the past. I find them an excellent source for reviewing information. However, this time, Mr. Linden posted a separate video editorializing and politicizing the attack on my family, which I find beyond the scope of his past postings. This was a lead. This has led me to concerns of bias in which I've always reviewed to be an unbiased record. And I'm referring to the link that said, "Come here to see Megan."
I didn't put that on there.
That was there. It was on your link.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. He's making a comment.
Anyone who wishes to review the full details of the subject discussed by Mrs. Baynes-Clemens and Mr. Stoneback, including emails, photos, and documentation, can do so by contacting the township for a right to know. Thank you. I went to the link.
Please review it again.
Any other announcement under comment towards regarding the agenda items? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to approval of the minutes for October the 18th, 2017. Have either of you gentlemen have the opportunity to review them? Do you have any corrections or changes or additions?
Red-reviewed and accurate, move for approval.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion made for approval in a second. All those signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, moving forward here, confirmed appointments tonight. Mr. Schimandera?
Boy, how do you follow this? Good evening. My name is Frank Schimandera. I've been a resident of West Rock Hill Township for over 40 some years. I live on a property that has been in my family for over 110 years. I've seen a lot of changes take place in that time, some good and some bad. I have become part of a core group of people that attend these supervisor meetings. There's some of them sitting in the room right now, some of them not here. I don't know whether they've been scared away by what they heard about what's going on with Thousand Acre Road. Thousand Acre Road residents, I commend you on your behavior on a whole. It has been above board and you really went into knowing what's going on as far as the quarry goes. The attacks, I agree, on Jim Miller were unquote for, especially the ones involving his wife. The other attack was made on him that it seemed like we might be taking a bribe from the quarry. That was not Jim's decision. It's a six-panel group. I sat on that group for seven, eight years. Sellersville has three people. Since Jim was accused as the representative of West Rock Hill, is that gentleman going to go over and make the same accusation at the Sellersville Borough Meetings? Because I'm sure they have accepted gifts from Haynes Kibblehouse. The only thing it seems that was wrong with that was the way it might have been presented. And Jim, I commend you for all the work you do for this township. And I don't believe Jim runs up and down the street on Thousand Acre Road looking to turn people in. And God bless you if you do, because I live on Allentown Road and other people live in the area. We ride around, we see what's wrong in the community, and we report it. That's the only way you have a township like this. You heard from Mr. Kleimer about the casino. To me, that came out of left field. I saw the article in the Philadelphia Inquirer and I might have poo-pooed it a little bit. It's not going to happen in West Rock Hill Township. But here again, I commend the supervisors. The quarry, to me, is not only a Thousand Acre Road problem, it's a township problem. And the one thing I'd like to say to the people that are sitting on the board that wrote up the comprehensive plans in the past, some of them still sitting on the boards. There was a lot of time spent on that. And I can say, and there's people that can confirm it, that I was the only resident that sat in that audience till about 10:30, 11 o'clock on a lot of nights. And the only thing I say to you now, don't give in to the quarry. Everything you did in that time and giving up your life, I'm not saying hours, I'm saying your life, to make this township what it is and putting in the regulations, don't tear it down because the quarry wants to buy or turn zoning ordinance. They came out yesterday and said they got 16 years of life in the quarry as it is. And guess what? They also said that getting this approval only adds six more years. I don't think it's worthy to these people that live on Thousand Acre Road to give them six more years just because they want it. You know, they knew what they got into when they got that land. They were not welcome into this community because there was a long fight to keep the quarry out of here and it was forced on us. And I can't say whether they've been as good a neighbor as we want it to be, but if I had to drink bottled water because of them, they're not that good of a neighbor. If you've ever been to Odessa, Texas, I was shocked one day. I was out there and I'm riding on a highway in a car. And all of a sudden, I see all these brown trucks, UPS trucks, coming out of a warehouse. And I said to the resident there, I says, "What are they?" "Oh, they're UPS trucks taking bottled waters to the houses of Odessa, Texas, because the community they live in is high gas and oil exploration-type community." That can happen to us. We almost have a casino that can come in here. Yeah, we're 25, 26 miles away from Bethlehem, maybe a little bit more from Parks. But these things can happen. And I say to you as the supervisors, I hope you don't make these changes just to appease the wants of the quarry. It's time we stand up for the residents and not only the residents of Thousand Acre Road, but the residents of the whole community. Because what you do today can affect the community for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next on the agenda under confirmed appointment is Regina Schrameyer.
Regina Schrameyer, Sterners Road. No, I can stand here, I'm happy. I place my name on the agenda for this evening because after the meeting last month, I left knowing that the resident presentations included omissions and distortion of facts. I am here not because, as Mrs. Baynes-Clemens insinuated, I am a Democratic Committee woman. She does not know me, yet included me in her Board of Supervisors rant last month. I am not a Democratic or a Republican Committee person. I am a resident who is sick and tired of politicians who manipulate and lie to us in a way that is destructive to our democracy. I love word games, board games, I love football games, but the games being played at all levels of government make me sick. That is my motivation, and I just couldn't let pass the omissions and distortions of facts that I heard last month. To this end, I requested all the documents referred to by Mr. Rambo and Mrs. Baynes-Clemens that they received under the Right to Know Regulation. Starting chronologically, I take issue with the incomplete information given regarding the relationship of West Rock Hill with Haynes Kibblehouse quarry operators on Ridge and County Line Road. Mr. Rambo insinuated that West Rock Hill supervisors may be facing quarry expansion decisions on in-kind projects completed for them by H&amp;K. I don't know if that's the case. However, I found two omissions in his information. Mr. Rambo cited two in-kind projects completed by H&amp;K for West Rock Hill, the paving of a 100-foot stretch of James Park walking path and the paving of the parking lot of the Holiday House pool. What he failed to mention was that there was also a third in-kind service performed by H&amp;K. It was an aerial survey of the M&amp;M Stone Quarry completed for quarry reclamation analysis. This survey included an aerial drone site survey detailed engineering design and preparation. There was no mention of this service or its in-kind value and no member of the Board of Supervisors clarified this for those of us in attendance. I would like to know if this action was approved by all the supervisors. Second, Mr. Rambo failed to mention that West Rock Hill Township was one of 22 different local organizations that received in-kind donations from H&amp;K over the two and a half years from 2015 through September of 2017. In addition, West Rock Hill was one of 140 organizations in 2016 and one of 220 organizations through September of 2017 in southeast Pennsylvania that received some type of monetary or in-kind benefit from H&amp;K. His remarks made it seem that H&amp;K had singled out and targeted West Rock Hill with in-kind services. I have no idea what Mr. Rambo's motivation was, but I believe our residents should have all the facts. Next came Mrs. Baynes-Clemens. I attended her hearing about her toilet slash trash issue because I have friends with children in the Pembroke School districts who are concerned about some of her positions under children's education. And I decided to attend her court hearing to see her in action, and I did. When she recounted her experience at the Board of Supervisors meeting, she misspoke. The judge never said the citation against her was frivolous. At the hearing, she probably spent about 15 to 20 minutes rambling on about her interpretation of what constituted trash can and how she was targeted by this township, specifically Mr. Miller. However, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, she failed to mention that the ordinance also has a clause that reads, "It is unlawful to deposit any refuge or other waste material at roadside collection for more than 24 hours prior to the time prescribed by the collector." She told the judge that her trash, the toilet, was left out on the roadside for two trash cycles. Not sure how the neighbors felt about that or how she would have felt if it was on another neighbor's property. When she finished airing her grievances associated with the citation, Judge Baum asked her if she finally understood the law. She said she did and he let her go without paying the $800 fee. It appeared to me that Greg had more township information he could have shared, but it seemed he didn't get a chance. When I went to the township building for the right to know documents, I asked Greg why this ordinance is enforced through citation. His response made sense. He said that when a resident allows trash to accumulate roadside, it emboldens other residents to behave similarly. He also explained that trash that remains roadside may attract all types of varnments and other animals. When I came to the township building to see the right to know information, I also counted approximately 50 letters that had been sent to the residents of Thousand Acre Road on March 2nd, 2015, including one to the household of Mrs. Baynes-Clemens. That letter put all the houses on Thousand Acre Road on notice of a 2,400 trash and refuge ordinance. Considering residents have had this information since 2015, I don't think the folks who serve our township deserve her accusations. It's fine to insist that our Board of Supervisors account for their actions, but when residents decide to make accusations or single out someone specifically, they should have all the facts, not just the ones that present a one-sided picture. I know I will be requesting more information through the Right to Know Information Law in the future because I now see that political game-playing and manipulation have given a one-sided, self-serving picture of the events that have taken place recently. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Schrameyer. Next on the agenda is committee reports. First on the agenda is planning commission. Mr. Durstein?
Good evening.
Hi, Chris, how are you?
I'm good. I'm going to lighten the mood a little bit. I'm going to talk about the quarry.
Oh, good. That's what they're here for.
All right. Planning Commission met last night. Our only applicant was H&amp;K Naysville. They kind of recapped their whole application and they added six conditions to their proposal. First one was one we had talked about before, is a water monitoring system. It's going to test the quality of water at six locations semi-annually. The testing would include testing for arsenic, which is the hot button topic right now. It would go for two years and then something happens after that.
Did you say semi-annually?
Yeah, twice a year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year for two years. And then I guess it gets reevaluated after that. Second was the addition of a 1,200-gallon pump tank to be available to residents with well issues within their zone of influence or somewhere close to their zone of influence. Anyone with well issues, they'd have a 1,200-gallon pump tank available for them to have water while their system is being repaired. Third was to provide treatment systems for wells exceeding legal limits of arsenic within 1,500 foot of the quarry, you know, the original 1,500 foot in the original agreement. Residents would be responsible for the maintenance of the system. Fourth thing they are proposing is to insulate their crushers as a noise abatement practice. They have already installed the doors that they had talked about on the one crusher. I asked if they had noticed or tested for sound levels and they said they have not. So we don't know if it helped or not. I don't know if residents would have anything to comment on that. They didn't last night. Number five was changing out beepers with strobe lights on their equipment at the quarry for nighttime operation only. They can use strobe lights on the equipment, I guess mounted on the back of the equipment so they don't have to run beepers at night, but it would only be in the dark. So during daytime operations, they would still be using the beepers. Number six concerns the berm. The berm that they're proposing for the area that they want to expand into would be built at 15-foot with two-to-one slope, 10-foot top width across both parcels. So they have, part of this expansion that they want to do is on land that they are already zoned for, part of it is what they're coming to us for to rezone. On that, the part that's already zoned due to prior agreement, they only need a 10-foot high berm there. So they're proposing to do 15-foot across the whole thing, but our ordinance calls for a three-to-one slope. They're proposing a two-to-one slope. So that's the six things that they offered up in addition to what they'd already talked about. We had a lot of public comment and questions. We had a marathon meeting. We adjourned at 10-ish. So we had three hours last night. We decided, PC decided to table the application for now based upon the fact that the supervisors are considering hiring an independent hydrogeologist. Now, I wanted to mention that H&amp;K had their hydrogeologist here talking primarily about arsenic. He seems to want us to believe that quarrying operations does not affect arsenic in the water. Mrs. Shetter provided some information stating the contrary. So I think it would behoove us to have an independent come out.
I think, Chris, that's one of the reasons why we suggested that last month, for Greg to get some names and prices on that, because we are here to protect the water of the entire township.
I agree.
And that's why it's important to find out what the independent study will reveal, not from somebody that works for the quarry, but from an independent-
Exactly, yeah.
-hydrogeologist.
I agree.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I add a little bit? Yeah, I agree with Jay. I feel like we need a baseline. We need a baseline going forward from this point. We have nothing except, we've got everything from the quarry and we have everything that the citizens have been doing. You've been getting your water tested and Mrs. Shetter has supplied a lot of information. I think if we have an independent hydrogeologist that comes in and gives us a study that we keep on file, who knows what's going to happen five years ago from now or 10 years ago, what 10 years from now, no matter what we do, if we, even if we don't, if we do or don't approve this zoning change, we still need that on file so we can look back and say, "This is the way it was in 2017." Right now, we've got nothing really. We've got, you know, all this other information we've got from the quarry, we've got information from the citizens, like I think. And we also have information from the state that can be thrown in. We've got information from the PAC that did a geological study several years ago. So I think if we get an independent that can take all of this information and put it into a single form, that would give us a baseline. That's my opinion.
I think we need that before we go forward.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. And I think it's in the best interest of the people, citizens. So I would be willing to make a motion that we move forward with hiring our-
Would you let him finish?
That is, you are finished, aren't you?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm on close.
Okay.
I'm on with stuff.
All right.
So, you know, based upon your decision, that's going to affect how we move forward-
Okay.
-with the Naysville. One bit of old business that we had, last month I asked you guys to authorize sending a letter to Rich Hill Associates about their proposed development regarding our traffic concerns. We did do that. I penned a letter. Steve put some big words in it for me. They sent it off to Rich Hill. Did you go to Pendott as well?
Went to Richland Township.
Richland Township, Pendott and Rich Hill Associates.
Okay. And we have heard nothing back from them. I'd like to hear back from them.
Are they done with the traffic study up there yet? That was supposed to be done.
I don't think anything's been-
I saw cables or something on those boards on the road on through, and I think here-
They were doing some surveying.
Yeah, I think that study would take a while till they were completed. They were going back and forth with Richland and Pendott as to the scope of the study.
Okay.
They had given some input on the scope of the study even before the letter- They had given some input on the scope of the study, even before the letter that Chris is talking about. But that will be some time before you would see any results of that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Is there anything, a comment I would like to read, if you don't mind, please?
Name and address, please, for the record?
Yeah. It's related to the topic at hand, making. My name is Vera Cole, and my husband is Marty Simon. We live at 2045 Upper Rocky Vale Road and own a business property at 1506 Old Bethlehem Pike. Many years ago, we chose to trust West Rock Hill Township as a safe and responsible place for our home and business. Both have thrived, and we are very grateful for the supervisors and committees who have served the township so well over all these years, present company included. We have never felt the need to weigh in on an issue facing the township as we do now about the quarry's rezoning request. ...in support of this request, filled with mind-numbing narrative, data, and maps. Yet it was only last month, in response to questions from concerned citizens and the Planning Commission, that the quarry attempted to identify any benefits to the township of approving the zoning change. They present superficial findings based on arbitrary multipliers with little or no tangibility to Rock Hill Township. Their documents offer no promise of any real value to the township or its residents for approving the zoning change. But the 470 pages do hold our lengthy and detailed plans for monitoring the wells of Township residents for contaminants and poisons, what to do when wells run dry, home arsenic treatment systems, schedules for earth-shaking blasts and explosions, and details of 15 wells contaminated since 2016 alone. It seems to us that the discussion of this request has gone wildly off-track. The quarry bought this property knowing that it was zoned residential conservation. The burden of proof to cause a change in our zoning is on them, not us. It's not anywhere near enough for them to say, quote, "Don't worry, if we poison it, we will fix it, and that is why you should approve the zoning change we are asking for." That's their argument in a nutshell. It's because we have plans for what to do when we contaminate, poison, and dry up your wells, you should approve our request. The mountain of documentation provided by the quarry with its deep pockets and skillful legal team has worked to divert and distract from what should be a very simple question for us to answer. It's like this: When your teenage son asks to go to a party where there will be underage drinking, does it matter if he tells you that he will fix anything he breaks, that if he gets sick, he will clean it up, that if he's hurt, he will pay for the hospital bills, and then he will play loud music and bother the neighbors but night after midnight? No. The question is, does he go to the party, and the answer is no. You thank him for his honesty and suggest that he do something else fun instead. It's not about who or how the problems will be fixed, it's about not causing the problems in the first place. Marty and I don't oppose quarries per se and appreciate that they provide necessary products to society, but expanding this quarry into an established residential area would be a known threat to public safety and welfare, especially in an area that's zoned not only residential but residential conservation. So we ask that you not be distracted from the simple question before us: Is it in the interest of the residents of West Rock Hill Township to change zoning so that quarry operations may expand into a residential conservation area? Clearly, no. Thank you. And I bring that up as a point about hiring the hydrogeologist. I can see where it would be good to have that report on the record, but I don't think it's necessary to support the decision.
I agree.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you for your comment. With that, I am going to put a motion on the floor to move forward with hiring our own independent hydrogeologist to do this independent study.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made, and second, all the.
I think you should probably define the scope of the study and talk about.
Guidelines. Greg, can you give me the estimates that you have, numbers that you have?
Well, I provided the board two, one from McCurry Associates and another one from EDN. EDN gave us one for $8,500. McCurry Associates, we didn't get to meet till later in the month, so they did not have a refined one. They just have an hourly rate of 110. But the board could set a price not to exceed of.
Which is what we should do?
$5,000.
Okay.
If you wanted to go in that direction.
What cost, Eddie, why would you want to?
We would ask them to see if they can do it for $5,000.
Was that a comment? Could you please give your name and your comment? I don't think that was actually a comment.
Was it? I was going to correct it with the board, I was looking that way. Sorry.
Mary, your recommendation, because the estimate that was given for 8,500, would there be less work done if we would say, I know it's a different outfit, a different firm, but we're trying to be independent with somebody that has never worked for the quarry?
Right. And now, the two applications, it's hard to find a hydrogeologist that has never done quarry work.
Right.
The hydrogeologist that the staff is recommending doesn't do quarry work. He only works on the municipal side of the table. Because he participated in the PAC hydrogeologic study, because he's done a lot of work in this area for Pen Ridge Regional Authority and other entities, he's familiar with the groundwater characteristics, and we believe that he could work more efficiently not having to reinvent the wheel. That's part of the staff recommendation.
Okay.
And that's why, he gave an hourly rate, and I think staff is also recommending a cost not to exceed $5,000, but we are hopeful that it will be lower than $5,000.
Okay. All right, well, then I will correct my motion to not exceed $5,000.
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay. Yes?
Jay, Anthony Bogner, Climb Avenue. The cost of that, is the township absorbing that, or has that come out of H&amp;K?
No, the township will be absorbing that, and we will be doing that because we are hiring it independently. We are hiring the hydrogeologist independent for our own study, so the costs will come out of the township.
But it's directly related to the application that they got?
It is, but it is related to the township, the citizens of the township. They already hired their own hydrogeologist. We're hiring somebody for us.
Trish Squirtus, 715 Bridge Alley Road. I would like Mary to clarify what you mean by not being able to reinvent the wheel.
Well, because he's familiar with the hydrogeologic characteristics of this area, he has a leg up and doesn't have to spend a lot of time familiarizing himself with other studies since his firm created some of the more definitive studies.
He's not depending on data provided by the quarry. He's independently collecting his own data.
He has, and one of the reasons that staff is recommending him is he has already collected a lot of his own data. I think what staff was thinking when it talked to the different hydrogeologic people was that they would review the application and provide comments as one of the possible tasks, try and address with the township a more satisfactory way of dealing with contaminants or toxins in water than the quarry has proposed at this point. And Greg, what were some of the other things that we were hopeful for in the scope?
Well, we were hopeful that he could attend public meetings and be able to answer people's questions.
Yeah.
If they had questions, we would be able to do the study and look at different information that's presented by everyone.
There's been a lot of concern expressed, both at the Planning Commission and at the supervisor meetings, about water quality in that area. And if somebody reviewed all of the documents and refreshed himself on the studies that he's already done, it would be different than us trying to tell you, you know, what's going on with your water. And that's why staff recommended this particular gentleman, because we thought that there would be more of a comfort level with the residents because he has never worked for H&amp;K or any other quarry.
Okay, that's.
Could that expertise?
To Greg, Jay.
Could that expertise be applied from the information from that hydrogeologist, the independent hydrogeologist? Could that expertise be applied and continued on for future zoning issues that we would have in the township?
Not only for future zoning issues, but just for, yes, but also for any future issues the township might have with the quarry going forward. So, I think Mr. Miller had mentioned, when we, you know, talked to the board individually about this, that it's a good thing to get as much information as we can.
Agreed.
So, right.
Agreed.
Can I just say one thing? Just a minute, David, and then you can go to Dave. I want this study, so, like I said, we have a baseline. We can put it in our files. If anything comes up over the next 20 years that this quarry is, we know is going to be in operation, then we've got a baseline to work from. I don't want this study just to move forward, okay? I think we should direct the Planning Commission to go ahead and move forward, knowing we're going to get this study. I don't want everybody to think this is going to be held up for six months while we get a study. I think, like I said, I think we should direct them to move forward. That's my opinion.
We need a study, yeah?
We need the study, no matter what, but I think we should direct the Planning Commission to move forward with their plans and make a decision. But that's going to be up to them.
Yeah, that's up to them.
That's my direction.
David?
David Collins, Barn Road. My question, thank you, Jim. My question was exactly, how long will this study take, and when should we expect results?
We don't know how long it's going to take, do we?
No, there's no time for us.
And because of that, I don't want the rest of these issues to keep hanging out. I think we need to move forward with that.
Michelle Shatter, 260 Thousand Acre Road. As a consultant, $5,000 is cheap. I would find it very important to believe that such a study could be conducted that fully addresses all of the issues that I think need to be addressed in such a study. I'm just throwing that out there, I think that's very next-gen, so I'm not sure what the scope of work was, what the explosions may have been.
I think the concept may be for the board to have them do an initial review of all existing documentation, their own studies that they have of the area, the information from H&amp;K, and whatever supplement they have. Come back with recommendations potentially for more studies, whether it's their own independent water testing, or sample wells, or anything. And at that point, the board could reevaluate what those additional costs would be. I, as I understood it, the $5,000 is the initial review of all the documentation to get comments on what would be the next stage.
And to that end, those of you who have, you know, already done testing of your wells, if you don't mind, if it's not too much of an invasion, if you could supply the township with that information so the hydrogeologist could include that in his initial study, that would also be helpful.
I believe this gentleman also, with this firm, also did the study for the PAC, right?
Yes.
The geological study, which is the Pen Ridge Area Coordination Committee. They had asked for a complete geological study of the whole Pen Ridge area several years ago, and he has that on file as a starting point. So, he knows more than just West Rock Hill, and that's a great place to start. Because like we heard the other night, there's fissures and cracks and everything for 100 miles around that is feeding water into here. So, I think it's good to have that level, and then we take your information, we take the information from the quarry also, that he, I mean, he's a hydrogeologist, he should know how to read it. I think the facts are going to stay the same, the way they're interpreted may change. All right? That's my opinion. So, that's why I want to move forward with the study. But like I said, let's let the Planning Commission go ahead and do something next month.
I think so, too, because, you know, due to the complexity of all the issues in dealing with bedrock and groundwater and aquiferous dynamics involved in it, you know, a study could very well conclude one way, you know, that, yes, the quarry is contributing arsenic to our groundwater supply, or no, or it might turn out to be inconclusive. We don't know what the result is. But we need to keep in mind, that's not the only reason why we are on here opposed to the quarry. But one thing also to keep in mind is, that quarry dewatering activity, and again, you know, the documents from 2016 said that they were dewatering at a rate of 340,000 gallons per day. That's a lot. But the quarry is.
What did you say that was again? Can you repeat that?
350,000 gallons per day, according to the 2016 documentation. That was the dewatering activity of the mine pit. But we have to keep in mind that the quarry is an actively ongoing operation, and it will continue to go on for many, many years to come. So, even though we may have some historic sampling data, you know, we have to keep in mind that impacts may not necessarily show up at this point, maybe they have, you know. So, we have to keep that in mind, too. You know, we have to keep in mind that, you know, the future could affect whatever studies we have done right now, but I think it's a great idea to have a base study. I think that's a really good idea. And the other thing is, I think it may be warranted to have everyone's water tested that's in the well-protection area. We may even want to consider extending that somewhat, maybe we could base that on the results of the preliminary evaluation. But I think, you know, if people have arsenic in the water and they're not having it tested, and it could be attributed to the quarry, I think they need to know that.
And to address you, Vera, I agree that the water study is separate from the zoning ordinance, okay? It's two different things, but we need both. We need to get both of them worked out.
I would agree.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask about the timing of that. So, if the Planning Commission can move ahead with its decision, will the board wait to make its decision until that report is finished? Have you decided that?
I'm not going to comment on that now. We don't know that yet.
Okay.
We don't know that yet. There was somebody back here? Was there? No? I'm sorry.
There's somebody back there.
Yep, Patrice.
Trish Squirtus, 715 Bridge Alley Road. In regards to having the Planning Commission move forward, I don't see how they can move forward with incomplete information. That's just operating my wishful thinking.
Thank you for your comment.
Let me make a couple of comments. $5,000 would be consumed within a week or less. I don't know how many have seen the stack of information it's provided, and that does not include all these studies that they supposedly have and would allow, they said they allow this person to review. That stack is that deep, and you can't go through it in a week, I guarantee you. And in a week, it's going to consume $5,000. So, I'm inclined to agree with what I heard from Vera, from the standpoint that we have to make a decision. That's not going to be the sole cause for making a decision. The decision is a matter of zoning, and if zoning says it's RC, that property was RC, that property even had a restriction on it, which was moved unbeknownst to the community, and so, they're not going to give up until they get an answer, and then they probably not give up. So, in addition to what we're talking about, having a water study, I don't know that that's going to be convincing to anybody in terms of the people at H&amp;K.
Don, I think that's.
Because they're going to counter it, and so, we'll wind up in court. And then the money starts rolling.
I don't know how you can assume things yet, but you have the right to do that if you'd like to. I merely.
I just told you, I believe what Vera said is correct. And I understand the water study, that's not going to impact this. And I don't disagree, it would be nice to have, but what's it going to get for us? We've got to make a decision for this thing.
Don, I agree with what you just said, and that's what I said. We need to do both. We need this water study for a base, for a baseline for the future, but we also need to move forward with the zoning issue. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to hire our own independent hydrogeologist not to exceed $5,000 for the initial study.
I'll second.
And you have a second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm going to stick with what Vera said.
Are you saying opposed?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Moving forward, next on the agenda is Park and Rec, Mr. Strobel. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. I skipped over one. Apologize for that.
That's all right.
Comprehensive Plan Committee, Mr. Duvall.
Okay, the Comprehensive Plan is moving along very well. We now have not only the listing from all the 800 or 900 responses we have, that's now available in print. It's been presented to the township and the committee members. It will be reviewed in chart form, which makes it a lot more easy to understand at our next meeting, fourth Thursday this month. So, I would suggest that if you're interested.
So I would suggest that if you're interested in that, I think you'll find some very interesting directions that the community has provided in terms of their views of what they like to see done with this community. And so I would urge you to come out and watch the graphs and understand them. I know Bob presented it to the Park and Rec Committee last week and got some input from them, and so I think you'll find it very interesting. And Bucks County has done a really good job of laying out the charts and the plan, so that it's pretty easy to understand what this community wants and what they don't want. So, other than that, I'd say it's going well.
Okay, good.
And there are some people coming in, private input, and that's very much appreciated. Nothing like this.
Any questions regarding the comprehensive?
No.
Okay.
It's moving nice.
All right, I'll make a motion, we accept Don's report as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I thought I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I second.
All right, all those signify by saying aye?
Yes, you did. Aye.
All right, okay. Now, Mr. Strobel, you're up next, I believe.
Okay. As Don just said, at our last Park and Rec meeting, we talked about the survey, and we had some charts that are out, preliminary. And we were a little surprised about some of the outcome, and I'll give you a little input that what the people in this township want are, pay us for walking, and they want your taxes to be kept low, and they want the roads to be maintained.
That's number one, roads.
They want that. So we're looking, of course, to Park and Rec to expand our, you know, totlot, but that doesn't seem to be high on the list in the people in the township. So that's on our list for the Park and Rec. So that was part of our discussion, and we had a couple of input here and there, as Don knows. We are looking at our Christmas tree. If you know our Christmas tree out front, we're going to take a look at it. We hear it's looking sick. So has anybody seen our Christmas tree out front? What do you think, David? Is it sick?
Horrible.
Horrible. Oh, it's not sick, it's horrible, okay. So if anybody knows of a tree that we can transplant in this place for the holiday season, let us know. Well, I mean, we haven't made a final move on that Christmas tree yet, but we'll take a look at it and see what is coming up for the holiday season. The Park and Rec, though, will not have a meeting next month. Next month is December time, and it's time that we don't have a meeting and we kind of have our little gathering. Otherwise, we had a kind of a calm meeting, right Suzanne? Nothing major came up, and we get this issues resolved on the Christmas tree, it would be good. It would be number one. Trying to think what else, nothing major. Had a nice meeting.
The garden was converted to its permanent mode with all the new perennials. They put in 60 perennials.
Compassionate gardens in the park.
Yeah, they put in 300 bulbs for the spring, and they put in, I forget, about 100 day lilies. So it's going to be a beautiful, bright yellow garden come springtime, so I'm really happy. And I think some people are still over there frozen to the cement from the Saturday when they did that. But a lot of the greens now kind of blend in with the bottom, so it looks kind of drab for the winter, but we'll get over it.
I mean, there's been a lot of people looking at that.
Yeah.
As they walk in the path.
Yeah.
It's really turned into be a project that most people can really appreciate. It hasn't cost taxpayers anything, and these people are working hard to keep it clean and neat.
Tremendous amount of effort there put into that, and I've had a lot of comments, a lot of compliments from citizens.
And I think one of our future projects for the park, we were talking about putting in a library in that area. One of these libraries, I'd say, free library, where people can bring books, you can read a book, you can go over to the compassionate garden, sit, talk with your neighbors, have a little time of your own, and then take a book back, and other people bring books. So that's one of our future projects. We're hoping to maybe get somebody to help us with that. Be good, we think. That's all I have. Anything else you can...
I want to make some comment on the totlot, because this thing hasn't gone anywhere, and we've all, from the Park and Rec's point of view, have tried hard to generate and create money.
Yeah.
And we haven't been successful. We've gotten a couple hundred dollars here, a couple hundred dollars there. I guess it's been three or four years now I've tried to get the board to move on spending the money to get this done. Originally, we had a study, it was around $25,000, am I correct, Suzanne?
Right.
That was three or four years ago. About three years ago, I asked the board to take the money from the Ruth James Trust Fund that we get every year, and I was denied. I am suggesting now, last year I asked the board to give me an idea or ideas of how to pay for this, so that we can get this finished. We already took out the bushes and stuff.
Right.
Between the totlot and the walking trail when we did the Compassionate Friends Garden. I believe we continue to ignore this and not get it accomplished, and I would like to accomplish it, even if we have to spend the money out of our reserves. So I'm asking, by next month, we decide or think about how to pay or what to do to get the totlot finished.
It's been a project that we've talked about for many years with the Park and Rec, but then, as we stated, we had this survey, and the survey's not giving us a real tick, you know, saying, that's what you want, you know? So what do you think, folks?
Bob, it's been a project that's been going on, though. We've started the project before the survey was ever put out.
True.
I mean, you don't rip out something and start something and then just stop without finishing it, or coming to a conclusion.
Yeah, I just want to spend some time, like you said, over the next 30 days, looking at the Ruth James Trust and seeing how much money we have in there and how we can work on this.
Okay.
So I'll be ready next month to talk about it.
Give some input.
I suggest everybody carefully look over the survey that was done.
Yeah.
To have a full understanding of what the community wants.
Right.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, absolutely, Don.
Okay, that's what I have for the Park and Rec.
I'll entertain a motion for approval for Bob's report as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second?
All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. All right, next on the agenda is the Conservation Committee.
The Conservation Committee meets tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. I also have one thing to talk about tonight, an executive session about land purchase.
Okay. Next...
Land purchase.
Next is the Commission reports, police report, Chief Rod Blake. How are you today?
Hello, Chief.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, Rod.
Good, how you doing?
Like that beer.
Good, Rod. Yeah, I don't like it. No Shave November, that's why there's a beer.
What's Mother's...
By the way, let me add to that. I mean, you can go out on their website and make a donation to one of the officers in one of the officer's names for No Shave November, so please go out there and support the police.
Greg is doing No Shave.
Yeah, look at that.
You did No Shave last year.
I did last year, but I couldn't stand it either. I can still make a donation, I'm just not going through that again.
This is the Pen Ridge Regional Police Department report, listing the activities for the Pen Ridge. 15 were reportable and 22 were non-reportable. The department investigated 44 crimes, four Part I crimes and 40 Part II crimes. Part I crimes are known as the index crimes, which are the most serious crimes in West Rock Hill. The crimes are as follows: Sex offense, open looness, fraud, contempt of court PFA violation, one theft of under $50, a harassment case, two cases of criminal mischief, one disorder of conduct, eight doglo violations, one ordinance violation, one possession of heroin, and East Rock Hill, one theft of between $50 and $200, one theft of under $50, four fraud cases, three criminal mischief cases, one sex offense against a minor, one possession of marijuana, two disorder of conducts, four harassment, one terrorist...